I'll tell you guys a brief story about my interests in politics and in government. When I was in the second grade, it was during the presidential election for Michael Dukakis and George Bush Senior. And we had a mock election. I went to South Boulevard, this is very close to where we are today, now flame. And we voted, we had a mock election, and my parents asked me that evening who I voted for. I told them I voted for George Bush. My parents being Democrats, Rep. Bill Yatt wanted to know why in the heck I voted for George Bush. And I told them that Michael Dukakis was just too short. And he didn't seem presidential. And I guess that started off, and now we have an appropriations chair who's probably about the same height as Michael Dukakis. I certainly wouldn't be voting for him, I'll tell you that. But as Jim stated, we are embarking upon our seventh special session of this term. And I look back over the issues and a lot of the conversations, and I'll tell you, they've been the same. The issues that we've discussed have been the same issues year after year after year. And as I look out, I know I don't have to remind any of you about how we got here and why we're here. But a lot of times, I don't think the public gets a fair representation of what we've gone through and the why. They see a lot of the headlines back and forth, but the fact that we started this administration facing a huge deficit and no longer needing to point fingers at the past administration, because I think that on both sides, we can agree that the policies of the past administration really set us up for where we are today and where we've been for the past three years. But we started, and I believe and I hope, my colleague Representative Bill Yatt, who's here, we started this term, and I think I had some optimism about where we were going to go in regards to our fiscal climate and what we were going to do to erase that deficit that many of us sat back and allowed the previous administration to do things that we were uncomfortable with. And started this administration with a new governor and a fresh start. Sadly, that just didn't happen. We have tried numerous times. We were told that we couldn't do a permanent fix unless we did real tax reform. We tried to do that in a special session. Democrats, Republicans filed multiple bills, and none of them were able to pass. So here we find ourselves, the Louisiana Legislature debating about a fraction of one penny. One penny, and that's what has really brought us here this morning, that debate. And a lot of folks in my district asked me, quite frankly, why are you guys debating a penny that individuals are going to have to pay? Why are we not looking at our tax exempt budget? Why are we not looking at some of the lucrative tax giveaways? And I'll tell you, we've tried those things. And they just are non-starters with a majority of the House. The House Republican leadership, they said time and time again that anything regarding corporate, anything regarding a lot of our lucrative tax giveaways are just off the table. So we find ourselves debating a fraction of one penny. Right now, I did an interview earlier, and I was asked the question, how confident I am that we're going to get things done in this special session? And I'll tell you, I'm hearing from the Chair of Appropriations that we're going to start the entire budget process all over. You know, an exercise that we don't need to go through, an exercise that I only see it as another way to attempt to derail this session. And I'm not going to say anything here that I wouldn't say directly to the Chairman that we haven't talked about over the past few days, but we've already passed a budget that none of us are excited about, but it's a moral budget. It's a budget that funds all of the priorities from both sides. It has a significant amount of cuts. I hear countless times that the Governor and the Democrats, we just want to tax people and grow government. I'll remind you that moving forward, half of the penny is over $400 million tax deduction. We're starting off cutting $400 million. The budget deficit is about $1 billion. The Governor didn't ask for $1 billion. The Governor originally asked for about $640 million. So we're starting off with a cut. So I'll tell you that those representations from my colleagues are just false. We all have taken the responsibility to cut government. I think that we've done a great job, but we just cannot continue to cut our way out of this situation. And this budget, I'll tell you, the last special session, it was a week before the Chairman even filed a budget. We went in special session for an entire week, and no budget was filed until Walt Legere from New Orleans filed his version of the budget that was vetoed by Governor Edwards. And that kind of brings me to one day, we were there last week, it seems like last week, it's all running together. But Walt attempted to bring that budget bill to the floor so we could vote on it, and it was a big fight. 10 minutes later, we voted to override the Governor's veto, which would have done in essence the same thing that Walt was trying to do, bring the same budget that was vetoed into play. But game stopped us from moving forward. But thank God that Walt Legere filed the bill, because but for it, I don't think we would have even reviewed a budget on last special session. But we did. And we passed a budget that, again, is a moral budget, that protects vital services. It protects all of the things that many people call our offices about. And we hear a lot about TOPS. I stand here as a top recipient, but I also stand here as a student that had an additional need, like many of our students face today. And I would have benefited from a Go! grant back when I was in college. Thank God this budget increases and invests in Go! grants to a tune of about $30 million that we've never invested that much in Go! grants before. And Go! grants go to our students that face a financial need and have a gap between their billing statement and scholarships or TOPS. And it's important that we fund those things. We continue to hear that Go! grants is a welfare program, but we don't hear that about TOPS. My same colleagues who voted for a voucher program, Go! grants goes to those exact same students. Those exact same students that we champion vouchers for, that we followed Governor Jindo, and we made sure that students were able to have the dollars follow them. What happens when those students graduate? What happens to that same family who it was so important for them to be able to go and take a voucher and use our tax dollars to go to a charter school? Then what do we do to them when they graduate? That's why it's so important that we fund programs like Go! grants and stop looking at them and labeling them as charity, but also recognizing that those same students who we gave a voucher deserve a chance to succeed at Southern, LSU, McNeese, and other colleges across this state. It's the moral and it's the right thing to do. The why, I get a lot of questions about why. And I think that Barry Ivey told us why. Barry Ivey, who is a Republican, our districts, we are adjacent to one another. My district goes all the way to Central. He represents a large portion of Central. When we had this tax debate, Barry filed almost 20 bills to make fiscal reforms, to make tax reforms that we all agreed were needed, that the Tax Commission told us were good things, and the door was closed on Barry. The door was closed to every single one of his ideas, not because they weren't good ideas, not because the Tax Foundation didn't support it, not because this commission of non-partisan business folks, local folks, they told us that we needed to do these things. Those things didn't pass, not because we didn't like Barry. They didn't pass because Barry was told that we could not give our Governor a win on tax reform. And it's not anything that I'm making up. You could go and check the tapes. And Barry had the courage to tell the entire state what many of us already knew, that this was not about prosperity. This was not about moving Louisiana forward. It was all about a political game and something to hurt the Governor. But here we are, and I think that the egg is not on the face of the Governor. The egg is on the face of the Legislature. Rep. Bill Yatt, it's on my face and it's on yours, even though you and I have tried to do the right thing. But this is not a game anymore. The people of our state are asking the Legislature, the Governor doesn't get one vote in the body, not a single vote. And at this point, if my advice to him would be, you know what, Governor, just stay away. Let us do it. Because if you ask for it, the response is going to be an overwhelming no. If the Governor had an idea to give every taxpayer in the state $1,000 for Christmas, some of my colleagues would say no, just because it's coming out of his mouth. And it's shameful. And we have so many outside influences trying to dictate where we go as a state. The first time I stood before this body was after the Alton Sterling situation. I remember, you know, everyone texting me when I said, you know, outsiders, don't come to Baton Rouge. We can handle our city. We know how to keep our city safe. We don't need you. And everybody was so excited when I said that about outsiders. We have outsiders right now knocking on doors. We have Americans for Prosperity, folks that don't live in our state, folks that don't need our hospitals and don't go to our schools, knocking on doors right now, trying to tell us not to do the right thing. We have Grover Norquist, who is not a Louisiana resident, threatening my colleagues, asking them not to do the right thing. We have a state Attorney General who wants to investigate Medicaid recipients, but nobody's talking about the fact that he took HUD dollars. In a state like Louisiana, our Attorney General, who wants to investigate the working poor, took HUD dollars to boost his own name. You guys haven't written a lot about that. Our Attorney General, Jeff Landry, took HUD dollars to boost his own name, but he has the audacity to try to tell us how to do our job. But nobody's talking about that. In a state like Louisiana, do you know how important HUD is? My district was one of the most impacted. I talk about Barry Ivey, House Districts from the 2016 flood. Barry had the most identified loss. I was second. Many of my constituents took out SBA loans. I know this is a two-year thing, but it's an issue that's still happening. Many of them took out SBA loans. We have Congressman Graves, who's my Congressman, and Congressman Richmond, they worked in a bipartisan fashion. They passed a bill to assist flood victims with duplication of benefits. You know what that bill is? It's sitting in the Senate. It's sitting in the Senate. After Garrett and Cedric worked together, and you know what's happening right now? The person that could be doing something about it, Senator Kennedy? He's not doing anything. Raise your hand if you've heard Senator Kennedy talk about this bill, anything about the SBA. You haven't. Because he's too busy criticizing the Governor and hadn't done his job. He's calling for a resignation. I'll call on Senator Kennedy. Get the SBA bill passed, or you resign. Do your job. Don't criticize the Governor for attempting to do his. Senator Kennedy, if you're listening, do your job. Get that SBA bill moving and provide flood relief to the people you represent. He's from Zachary. He talked about it. He talked about his love for cheerleaders in his commercials. He talked about how he loves Zachary. Zachary was hit by the flood. Many of the people that you grew up with, those same cheerleaders, if they're still in Zachary, their house probably flooded. And they need relief from the SBA. And you haven't done anything. The bill is sitting in the Senate, and we haven't heard anything about it. And if I'm wrong, and if the Senator has been pushing those issues, I would love to be corrected. But I constantly see my Senator talking about everything that the President is doing, and he's riding the President's coattails until the President isn't popular anymore, and he's going to switch, like he always has. He was a Democrat, now he's a Republican. He was Bobby Jindo's best friend until Bobby Jindo became unpopular. Then he talked about him. He's made a career of talking about everyone and not doing some self-evaluation on the job that he's done and the job that he needs to do. We don't need any more outsiders trying to dictate what's going to happen in Louisiana Legislature. And I'll tell you, I do not take pride in continuing to come down to the Capitol to do the exact same thing. If I didn't live in Baton Rouge, I would probably be one of the ones that would have resigned, like my other colleagues who were just tired of it. But we have folks that are here leaving their families to come back and do something very simple. And that's fund the moral budget that we passed. And I think we have an opportunity to do it. Today, when we get to session, there's only one bill that's been filed, one. One bill. The same bill that we didn't get an opportunity to vote on for the second time. Because one of my colleagues, who's about to be a federal judge, stood in the way and ran the clock out purposely and didn't allow us the opportunity to vote. And that's just not the way that we should do business. That one bill that's sitting there, filed by Representative Terry Landry, and it looks exactly like the bill that we didn't get an opportunity to vote on. We have an opportunity today, once we get there, to move that bill through the process. It doesn't need to go the ways it means again. It does not need another public hearing. We've heard from the public. We know what's going to happen if we don't fund the moral budget that we passed. We don't need to waste another day. There's going to be a motion made today to discharge the committee and bring that bill up. If there is a real sincere appreciation for the problem and a real sincere appreciation for fixing the problem, my colleagues in the House are going to stand with us when we make that motion. And we're going to bring that bill out of committee, and we're going to vote on it and send it to the Senate. And hopefully, we could save the taxpayers in the state of Louisiana from having to pay $60,000 for us to be there. I love Representative Bill Yatt. I talk to him all the time. But I would like to miss him. I would like to not have to see him as much. And him and Paula Davis and Steve Carter, look, I love them all. I would much rather see them outside of the state Capitol. And I'll tell you, we have an obligation and a responsibility to move this session forward. And we can move it forward in less than five days. We can get this wrapped up by Friday, if we're willing to. If we don't waste time by bringing the moral budget that has already been passed, if we don't waste time trying to have these hearings on the Department of Health. And look, if the Department of Health has more dollars and we could cut some programs and not impact the health and welfare of the people of Louisiana, let's do it. But I also know that Joint Budget can review those things every month for the next year. If there are real questions, if there are real concerns, you could address those in Joint Budget. And you don't have to hold the state hostage to play another game. I'll tell you, my words aren't as pretty as they probably would have been three years ago. But there's a lot of frustration. Because outside of being a state representative and a graduate of Southern, I've also worked as an adjunct professor at Southern. And I've witnessed some of the issues that happen when professors get tired and they leave. I've witnessed what happens when we cancel classes and we cut certain programs that are needed for our students to excel. I've witnessed it. And I've had to sit and talk to my students who couldn't afford the book for my class. I've talked to one young lady who used to bring her daughter to class, because when I took over the class, I changed it from an evening class to a morning class to accommodate my schedule. And unfortunately, it didn't accommodate hers. So she sat there every day at 8:00 a.m., and she brought her daughter with her. She brought her daughter with her. And that's the type of commitment, that's the type of work ethic that I think we need to honor. And it's not about, as my colleague Representative Hodges said on last week, giving money to people that don't work. It's ludicrous. Medicaid expansion was a program that has come under frequent attack for doing not only the moral thing, but the fiscal responsible thing, because the federal government is paying for it. And if we didn't expand Medicaid, the cost would be more severe. And you look at the cost of healthcare, everybody in this room probably has private insurance. Your insurance, cost goes up. So when you talk about what's going on with the Department of Health, of course, the cost of Medicare has gone up. The cost of healthcare continues to go up. And if we're going to continue to make sure that our citizens have basic healthcare, it's going to happen. It's natural. We talk a lot about running a state like a business. When is it a bad thing for your business to end the year in the black and not the red? Why is that a bad thing? We talk about it. I've asked my colleagues, we cannot raise a half of a penny. I'm like, why? What if we end up with a surplus? What's the problem with a surplus? We could use those dollars to pay down the UAL. We could put dollars back into our savings account. When is that not a good thing for a business, to pay down his debt and to increase his savings? We don't really want to run a state like a business. We want to run a state in the ground. But I'll tell you, we have an obligation to do the right thing, and I hope that the outpouring of distrust, the concern that we hear, it's not just top students, not just their parents. We're hearing from state workers who are concerned. We're hearing from hospital executives who are concerned. It's no longer a game. And until we summon the courage to do the right thing, we're going to continue to have this conversation about what's going to happen in the next special session. We left with 64 votes on that bill. One person resigned, so we're at 63. We need eight, seven people to step up. Just seven. And we could go home. And we could go back to living the lives and really focusing on what's going on back in our districts. And all we got to do, we don't have to look far. We could look right at this SBA bill. You look at the authors, you look at Gary Graves, a Republican from Baton Rouge, and Cedric Richmond, a Democrat from New Orleans, who worked together to solve an issue for our citizens. Right now, we have a bill, one bill that's filed, over 40 co-authors, over 40, four of them Republican, and I'm sure many more would join. 40 co-authors plus another 13, we could get that bill onto the floor today. And that's my commitment, to get us out of this special session and get us out of here as quickly and as swiftly as we can and try to save some dollars for our taxpayers and really restore some trust back into the body. Because that's all we're doing. We are losing the support and we're losing the trust of the people that elected us. And I don't think that we're doing them a service by continuing to play these games. And I'll tell you, you know, I've threw a couple jabs, but I haven't told one lie. And I'll tell you, just like I could throw them, I'm strong enough to take one. The penny, I didn't want to vote for that either. It's a compromise. We talk about compromise. In the first special session, I was quoted in many of your publications as saying that I wouldn't vote for it. Compromise. Change. Hearing from the people of Louisiana. And I recognize that it was not just about the promise that I made to myself, but the promise that I made to the people that elected me, those students, those children that come to us, that need waivers, their parents, our state workers, and most importantly, our education system. Because for a state as rich as we are in resources to continue to rank 50th and 49th is just unacceptable. And we can do those things if we simply make the investment into our state. And with that, I'll answer questions. Yes, sir?
Would you mind citing your source or your statement previously that Americans for Prosperity workers were out knocking on doors and being paid, that they were all out of state? The reason I'm asking that question is because I am one of those Americans for Prosperity. But there are typically about 20 who will gather together and go and knock on doors. I can tell you that all of them are from Louisiana. None of us were being paid. So I'd like to just ask, where are the sources of the statements?
It's come from my colleagues, many of my colleagues who have had you guys knocking on doors in the area. I know that they won't knock on doors in my district, or I'll put my face on a flyer, because I'm not intimidated by you guys. Unfortunately, too many of my colleagues are. But I'll tell you, I haven't heard you guys come with a single solution. And I would hope that you would start coming to the table with solutions and not fear tactics to some of my colleagues. And if all of you are from Louisiana, then again, I don't have a problem with being wrong. But my colleagues, whose districts you guys have been in, we know that Americans for Prosperity are funded by folks that don't live here and don't pay taxes here, don't have students that need to go to college here. And my concern is about and lies with the people here, not the people that are funding that organization. If you're doing it on a volunteer effort, kudos to you. Next question.
Ted, it was my opinion that there needs to be some kind of bill passed for appropriations because the current budget as it stands does not appropriate the money from this special session. Is that, do you see that as a technical fix or as something that reopens the budget to make?
Well, you know, there are debates going back and forth. The Clerk of the House, the Clerk of the Senate have their ideas. But I'll tell you, when we're looking at history, Governor Foster had a similar situation. And what the Governor did, he put that one section of House Bill 1, I think it was Section 17 or 18, that talked about what to do with the additional revenues. I firmly believe that we can address that shortfall by just going into that specific session, and we don't need that section and not needing to open up the entire budget. And I base that off of guidance from the Clerk, and I base it off of history. Because when Republican Mike Foster did it, it wasn't a problem. But now it's illegal.
Ted, would you repeat the questions from here on?
Will do. Will do.
I had a question then. What was the, did you all ever find out where the Poor People's Army group, or whatever they were called, that disrupted a meeting, where were most of them from? Were they from out of state?
The question was about the people from the Poor People's campaign that came in and disrupted a meeting. I won't say that it was a disruption. I'll say that their voices, they wanted their voices heard, and a lot of times, depending on what you're saying, you get shut out. And many of those folks I know, many of them are from here. Some could be out of town, some could be volunteers. But I'll tell you that they asked for a moral budget. We passed a moral budget. They talked about us funding our critical services, and that's what they wanted. And the young man that got pulled out, he ventured into an area that's off limits to the public. He sat in front of the table, and that's just an area that we have labeled as off limits. So that's why he was asked to leave. But I'll tell you that their concerns were heard loud and clear.
Well, as the, with the budget that was passed, what was the level of TOPS that was funded before we left there?
I think it was 70%. And so the question was the level of TOPS that was funded with the budget that we passed. I think TOPS was at close to 70%. And what was included in the budget, there were some things called below the line, and we would fund those pro-rata. And I think TOPS, and if I'm mistaken, Mayor Bill Yatt, who's on the appropriation, I think TOPS was number one with how are we going to fund those things. And then, you know, funding them pro-rata, we still may end up with a situation that TOPS is not fully funded. You know, I'll tell you, it would be a shame, but you know, we continue to play games. It is a possibility that TOPS will not be funded. And now, we have students who are trying to make decisions about where they're going to go in less than two months. And to continue to string them along is a problem. You got another question? Yes, sir?
Sure. You made some statements earlier about the previous administration. Would you care to comment on the present administration having said it would free up statutory dedications to be eligible for cuts, which I forget to be seen done to see done?
The previous administration, the question is, what has the previous administration done to free up statute?
I was a part of the administration.
Okay, go ahead.
And secondly, is said-passed opposition to House Bill 760 that would provide a more transparency to the inner details of the budget?
Which one was it? That was the checkbook?
Well, 760 was a bill by Jay Morris that would have provided the same access to legislators that the Governor's office enjoyed. And Representative Harris, you can correct if this is wrong, stood right where you're standing and said that the Governor's office actively lobbied against that bill.
Well, I don't, I won't stand here and say that I believe everything that comes out of Representative Harris's mouth about what the Governor's office did. But I will tell you that with statutory dedications, that we could talk about the constitutional convention. The Governor has not a single vote. The Governor has said we could free those things up. I've said it. But you know who has the majority in the House? The Republicans. And if they wanted to free up statutory dedications, we could do it easily. They don't want to. It is another opportunity to talk about what we could do but not actually do it. We don't need to show up. All these fiscal reforms, the Republicans have enough votes to pass these things. And what you've seen continuously, it does not happen, right? A constitutional convention, we don't need it. A constitutional convention is being asked for because we don't have the courage to do our job. Everything that we've been talking about, we could do it. I'm in the minority. It takes 53 votes to pass. Unlock these dedications. I'm with it. They don't pass. The majority of the bodies Republican. This is a Republican talking point. They don't have the votes. They don't have the votes. Simple. The governor's reasoning for vetoing those bills, you have to ask him. But I'll tell you, even with the checkbook, my issue with the checkbook, the Republicans and Jeff Landry, while he's taking HUD dollars for his own benefit, he wants to go out and investigate and look at the tax returns for Medicaid recipients. But with the checkbook, we can't see how much money we're giving to Exxon and all these other million-dollar corporations and taxing centers. Let's include that, and that's real transparency. So my friends, they keep talking about transparency, they don't want real transparency. They don't want the taxpayers to know what businesses we're subsidizing. Every car lot that you pass, we have an inventory tax credit. We're paying them to be here. We don't need to do that. Local government is relying on us to pay their bills, we don't need to do it. But transparency is only transparent when it's what they want. And it's not real transparency. And I'm sure the governor vetoed it for a good reason.
Well, actually, it's a 900 committee.
Okay. Well, a committee that probably is stacked by Republicans, right? So again, not a good idea. Yes, sir?
My friend, Jim, is probably gonna ask a question first. I'm reluctant, of course, because when I ask, I'm not gonna be able to turn it back.
Okay.
But what's your take, Representative, about Senator Kennedy running for governor?
I think, I would love it. Because I'm for John Bill Edwards. And if we're gonna have a Republican on the other side, I'd like it to be Senator Kennedy. Senator Kennedy has, he has elevated up the ladder and I think that he's been one to elevate without really accomplishing anything. When you look at our fiscal affairs, he stood quiet while Janda was doing this. Right? The state treasurer was quiet. He let us pass these temporary things and never said a word until Janda was unpopular. By then, it was too late. So if he wants to run, then suit him up and run. But run and base it on something that you've been able to accomplish. Because I think that the continued attacks on Governor Edwards, I think that the voters, I know that the voters of this state are more, they're more in tune, they're smarter than that. And I think that they could see straight through a person like Senator Kennedy. And I, you know, he might be a good guy personally, his politics are just all over the place. I don't know, he might be a Democrat again next year, we don't know.
During this past legislatureal session, I was impressed with the Legislative Black Caucus' balanced approach to allowing the cuts. And I was surprised to find that the caucus seemed to have taken the lead in making sure that the poor were protected, the most vulnerable were protected, but then everyone shared the pain. Are you finding that there's a high degree of receptivity with the colleagues, with the caucus taking that respect?
Yeah, the question is about the Legislative Black Caucus and the intention to be the voice for the voiceless and the help for the poor. First thing I'll tell you is, we couldn't accomplish anything without the entire Democratic Caucus. And it is not, it does not get brought up enough that, you know, we typically have 100% participation outside of the Chair Ways and Means. And we don't really count him anymore when we're taking votes. So the issues that the Black Caucus have pushed have been supported, not just by the entire Democratic Caucus, but we found some moderate Republicans who agree with us. We stood firm on the Earned Income Tax Credit Increase. You know, that's a Ronald Reagan policy. Right? And for us, as Democrats, to vote for regressive sales tax, we know who is going to hit the most. So for us to be able to get that modest increase in the Earned Income Tax Credit was a win. And we find it with the Caucus and the entire Democratic Caucus. You know, poor people don't have lobbyists down there. And when we talk about trying to peel back some of these exemptions, and I'll say some of the things, not all of the things that the Americans for Prosperity talk about are bad, because they talk about a lot of these exemptions and credits and how we could roll those back. But they have lobbyists that are there. And they tell us, don't touch them, don't touch them. But those poor people, they don't have lobbyists at the Capitol and they can't show up because they're too busy working. They're too busy working two and three jobs. So for us to be, we talk about a body. I think that the Democrats have been the conscience of the body. And for issues like that, we have to do it, especially with the sales tax. Because it is a regressive tax and noting that it's not as regressive in Louisiana because it doesn't apply to groceries and prescription drugs. But it's important for us to stand in the gap and do those things. And not only issues like the Earned Income Tax Credit, but we saw recently that the Republican Central Committee supported the non-unanimous jury bill that we passed. And it's time for us in November for the voters to vote that down. And that takes us out of, you know, the dark past. We know that it had a very, you know, a bad birth here. It was born out of segregation and racism. And we saw not only Democrats, not only the Black Caucus, but a large percentage of the body supported that bill. And now the Republican State Central Committee says that they supported as well. You know, those are the type of things that, we should stand on those things and try to get past this budget issue. Because it's clear that we have the ability to work together. It's just, we can't see today because we're too busy looking at October or November of 2019 in an election. We're not looking at the issues of today. Yes, sir?
Chad, we know each other says, you were working at the Department of Representatives and I at the Department of Natural Resources as well as the Attorney General's Office. And for so many years now, I've been trying to get our legislature to work to either repeal or appropriately amend a little-known statute called Revise Statute 30, Title 51, which in and of itself is just two sentences and consists of an entire chapter of Title 30. All of my representatives, most of the time, the Democrats, that's just the way it is. So I do Republicans, I was with Democrats. So I went to my party and tried to get them to do this. And I've given them hope until the close of this year, and I do that, and all that's done. And I don't just go work from Seagull. You have to understand that everything that I look at, I look at it that way. I cannot, as a groundhog, as a lover of my community, as somebody that's dedicated 20 years to try to do what's right and what's just when I was a state senator. And having been in the places that I have been and seen the things that I've seen and worked with the people that I've worked with, I absolutely know that that statute is a major reason that our governor is our governor and that our Attorney General is our Attorney General.
What's the statute? You're talking about, yeah, what's the statute? I'm not familiar.
Revise Statute 30, comma, 51. Fortunately for you, you've never been on a committee, you understand? But you've had the opportunity to do something about that. But I have sent communications to my party, and my party dropped the ball. Now, you talked about egg on the base, you talked about obligations to do the job. Now, to be honest...
What's your question?
My question is this, tomorrow, if Jim will take the call, I am going to ask West Point Honored about it. What about that? What is he going to do to make sure that that statute, that horrible statute, which still exists even though we have that? What's your question?
Yeah, I'm...
I'm a contributor, that's why.
Yeah, yes. And I apologize, I don't know off the top of my head, you keep saying the statute, but I don't know.
This is what it says. It says that any soup regarding production, transportation, or marketing of oil and gas or product ever, okay, to enforce in a civil manner, okay, must be broadened in three years for the time the Attorney General acknowledges the right. Okay? Now, what does that mean? Then on the books, that's before I was born. You guys have never had to fill it, I've had to fill it. And I'm telling you, it is a horrible statute. It costs the state so much. And if I gotta tell the truth, I gotta tell it. You're gonna lose my license. I'm not gonna let it continue.
You know, I'll tell you that, you know, today, and I've known you a long time, and this is the first time we've had the conversation, which I'll say is a problem, that we haven't had the conversation with it, our relationship that you've never brought it to me and I never had the opportunity to vote on it. I can't speak for the governor, but I can speak for myself and tell you, I'll look into it. Unfortunately, you've given us until the end of the year. I hope we don't have another session this year. So it may be something that I'll look at on next year.
But I can assure you, your leadership in the Democratic Party has got it.
All right, Representative, why is you said the Attorney General benefited from HUD? What do you mean by that?
There were HUD dollars that were supposed to be used to talk about housing discrimination, a federal grant that the Attorney General received. He used those dollars to, you know, promote his name, his personal website. He brought all these different promotional items. It's only been written about by one person, Lamar White. And I haven't seen it talked about. And after that article went out, I started to see commercials where the Attorney General is, he has, he's talked about Martin Luther King and he's talking about, you know, housing discrimination and to contact his office. But for that publication by Lamar White, I don't think we would even have the benefit of knowing about it. And I think that it's a shame for our Attorney General to look down on us and dictate how we do our job when he's using federal dollars to promote his own interests. You know, that's where it came from. Thank God for Lamar White for exposing it, because now at least we have these nice commercials where he's quoting Martin Luther King. But for someone who has not been a good steward of the people's tax dollars to now want to investigate Medicaid recipients, I think it's laughable. Yes, sir?
Just to hear it, any thoughts on reapportionment? What's the knockouts?
The question is about reapportionment, and I'm so glad that you asked that question. Reapportionment and redistricting is going to be the single most important discussion that we're gonna have in the next five years. I'll tell you right now, you saw a lawsuit that was filed, looking at our maps. You have lawsuits across the country and it's not based on race anymore. Those lawsuits are based on party. And I'll tell you that both sides have been wrong. As a member of the Black Caucus, we don't need to go into the next redistricting fight looking to create districts that are 80% African-American. Because quite frankly, you don't need to have an 80% African-American district to win. What happens is, when you create these 80% African-American districts, you create a lot of 20% African-American districts and those voices are silent. Right? So you're silencing a whole segment of voters. And then when we look at our parties, right, you can see what's going on in the legislature right now. You know, members aren't persuaded to move to the middle because they only have a small percentage of voters who don't think like they think. So you don't have to answer to them. You don't have to talk to them. Tanner McGee, Tanner McGee is from Homer. He has an ideal district and he talks about it. And when you look at his voting record, he doesn't vote 100% with either side, because he can't. Because he represents people with diverse backgrounds. And that is going to be the single most important fight. I was in Atlanta two weeks ago, I served on what's called the Quad Caucus. Forty legislators from across the country, 10 African-American, 10 Native American, 10 Asians Pacific, and 10, did I say Native American already? So it's Asian, Hispanic, Native American, and Black. Forty of us. We talked about the Census 2020 for three days. We've looked at the process now. Last time, there were dollars allocated for people to go and knock on doors, like my friends from American for Prosperity are doing. Knock on doors in those hard-to-count areas. Those things aren't funded anymore and it's all gonna be online. That's gonna impact states like Louisiana, rural areas who don't have access to broadband because Governor Janda didn't want the money to do that. I'll slide him back in. And we have poor communities that don't have access to these things. Reapportionment, redistricting, Census 2020 is going to be huge. And we have to look at it not from a partisan or racial thing, because if members of our community aren't counted, that impacts the federal resources that are coming here. So we're gonna have taxpayers that are sending their money to Washington and that money's gonna go to Texas and Arkansas and Maine, because we are not going to be in a position where we're eligible to get counted. Now, if I'm still in the legislature then, I'll tell you, one of the things, I love Mr. Graves and I love Mr. Richmond, but I would like for Baton Rouge to have its own congressional district. Right? It makes no sense that the capital city has to share split representation from New Orleans to Baton Rouge. If I'm still there, that's an issue that I'm gonna work on. Looking at how we are going to be able to place voters is vitally important. I come from a district that was created because of the flood. Right? I'm one of the only members of the legislature that didn't get an opportunity to vote for myself because I ran in a new district, which the law required me to do, for all of you guys that are looking for something to get me on. The law required me to run in a newly created district because of Hurricane Katrina. And that's why I'm so passionate about the floods of 2016. I'm so angry that our senator has done nothing for the SBA, because I know how important it is when you lose a community because of a natural disaster. So look, that question is something, we've been having the conversations in the caucus about hiring our own demographer, making sure that we're ready. Because I'll tell you, it's gonna be the single most important issue facing us if we could get our budget corrected. Mr. Hightower, you got one more?
Yeah, one more, very quickly. Assuming the House goes to passes, and you have the half-cent regulation, what does, how does that figure into sharing Western rules and proposals to have a half-cent for the strategy here? Have any insight on that?
The question is, if we're able to pass a half-cent, what does that do for the mayor's recent proposal? I'll tell you that any tax increase we've witnessed in this community has not been met with favor. You know, I'll tell you, the mayor and the council, they're gonna have to do some very aggressive campaigning. We have the two biggest issues in our community, traffic and crime, and the voters have said no to proposals like that before. You know, it is a very tough sell to get the voters to support it. But you know, we have to do something about our infrastructure. Even as a state, we continue to say no to those things. There have been constant conversations about dedicating a portion of the sales tax to the TTF. I think it's a horrible idea. I think that if we're gonna do something, we need to pass a gas tax like Steve Carter asked for. But again, we're having discussions about a fraction of a fraction of a fraction of a penny. So I'll tell you, I'm not as excited that we're gonna be able to get a gas tax passed in this term.